Loudly and clearly, so we can get everything on the tape.
We have two new microphones.
And we have two new microphones, that's going to help out quite a bit. And I think we should get underway. Okay. I'm making this announcement in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act being Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Laws of the State of New Jersey. The Planning Board Secretary has prepared a schedule of the meeting of the Planning Board of the Borough of Kennelworth for the year 2022 and has posted a true copy of this schedule on a bulletin board located at the front entrance of Borough Hall and has mailed true copies of this schedule to the local source at the Star Ledger and is maintaining a copy of this schedule in Borough Hall. Accordingly, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied in regards to this meeting. Can we stand for the political leaders, Chris?
I prostrate into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna.
Here.
Mr. Venestrella.
Here.
Mr. David.
Here.
Mr. Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Mathio.
Here.
Mr. Scudary.
Here.
And Mr. Havelario.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes of April 14?
And?
Motion.
And May 2nd.
And, and our special meeting on May 2nd, I'm sorry. Motion made by Mr. Venestrella, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay. Communications guy?
Yep.
Okay, seeing none, how about old business?
No old business.
No old business, okay. I'm going to save some comments for the good of the board because I have something to share with everyone, okay? So, the first resolution is the Planning Board Resolution Adopting the Master Plan for Reexamination. Mr. Graydon.
This memorializes what the board did at its special meeting on May 2nd. Kevin O'Brien gave us a rundown, an analysis of his master plan reexamination report. And after listening to Kevin and anyone else who had an interest, the board adopted the master plan reexamination report. This will tie into our second resolution. And the report, our recommendation was later passed on to the Borough Council. So that's what this resolution is. Nothing more, nothing less than that, just memorializing what we did on May 2nd.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Mr. Venestrella, seconded by Mr. Scudary. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna.
Yes.
Mr. Venestrella.
Yes.
Mr. David.
Yes.
Mr. Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Mathio.
Yes.
And Mr. Havelario.
Yes. Okay, I just want to put something in here for the record. On, I guess it was May 4th or so, I don't know the exact date, but I was at a council meeting for, I'm sorry, May 4th, for this particular ordinance. And I would tell you that with our council liaison, Joe Venestrella, and mayor and council, all were very, very much impressed of all the hard work that the committee did, led by Mr. David and then everyone who organized this ordinance for the betterment of our borough, followed up by Kevin and Harbor. And I just wanted to commend everyone for doing a great job. And a few of the council people, including Mr. Pogliisi, and he used the word "kudos to your planning board" for doing an outstanding job. And I needed to share that with everyone. So, thank you very much for taking care of that. So, moving on, what do we have? New business? I'm sorry.
Mr. Barnes.
Oh, I thought we did go down there.
Yeah, that was the first one. That was the master plan reexamination.
Okay, so now we have the ordinance, the resolution for the master plan consisting review of the ordinance.
Yeah, picking up on what the chairman just discussed, there was a lot of work done in a short period of time, subsequent to our May 2nd meeting, where the resolution that we just adopted mentioned or recommended certain zone changes along the boulevard. The governing body on the night of May 4th introduced ordinance number 2022-09. I'm not going to go into detail on that. And it was introduced, and by law, it comes to us for a consistency review, to make certain that the ordinance is consistent with our master plan. And in this case, our master plan reexamination. So that's what this is about. Kevin, you may want to give just 60 seconds of what this is about, in your view of whether ordinance 2022-9 is, in your opinion, as a planner, is consistent with the reexamination report.
Yeah, it's okay. (laughter)
Let me swear. Yeah, I am. In fact, let me swear in Kevin and Chris, not just for this, but for the other matters that are going to be coming up. Gentlemen, with regard to your comments this evening, do you swear that they shall be the truth to help your God?
I do.
Thank you. Again, Kevin O'Brien and Chris Graydon.
The board is familiar with the process by which we make changes to the ordinance here in the borough. In many cases, the Borough Council comes up with an idea, they bring it to the council in the form of ordinance, and after a first reading, it is sent here to the Planning Board where we tell them whether or not we think it is consistent with the master plan. If we tell them that it is, then they proceed to a second reading and they pass it or not as they wish. If on the other hand, our board says to them, "No, we don't think it's consistent," then that creates a hurdle for the Borough Council to pass that ordinance. And there are greater numbers that are involved. It makes it more difficult. Statements have to be made, it's a greater burden to get to. So, this board's opinion is very weighty in terms of what it means, because we are the guardians of the master plan, that's our duty. So tonight, you're just saying that you looked at the ordinance and you think it's consistent with the master plan, and when you consider we wrote the master plan a week ago to write this ordinance, I would hardly endorse it as being very much consistent with what you all just did.
And in conjunction with that, the governing body did already have their first reading, we're waiting on our second reading, and so it was a huge success for this planning ordinance.
So this resolution, if it's adopted, will go to the governing body, which triggers their finalizing that ordinance.
Correct. So is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente. Roll call, please.
Mr. Serna.
Yes.
Mr. Venestrella.
Yes.
Mr. David.
Yes.
Mr. Clemente.
Yes.
Mr. Mathio.
Yes.
Mr. Scudary.
Yes.
And Mr. Havelario.
Yes. Great job again, people. Next, we have, you okay?
No, yeah, no, really.
Yeah, that was a lot of work. It was a lot of work and it paid off. Okay, new business, the courtesy review for the Kennelworth Board of Education. Mr. David?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I am a member of the Board of Education as well, I refuse myself from the dais.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. David. Would you like to come up and present, please? Would another member of the board like to come up and sit here on the dais? Mr. Clemente?
Okay.
Yeah. Would we like to swear everyone in at one time and just way we could get this done?
I know there are two courtesy reviews for the Harding School and the High School. You can, we can do them all at, we have one at once, but do one at a time because I'm going to have to draft two different resolutions that are basically going to be consistent with each other. So, why don't you start with one, we'll finish it, then go on to number two, and then we'll ask questions back. And again, for courtesy review, we don't say yes or no, we basically listen to the board's comments. If we have an idea that we think will be helpful, we can say it. The school board's under no obligation to do it, so we basically sit and smile and make sure everything goes okay. If you could, you've been here before, if you can raise your right hand, please. With regard to these courtesy reviews, do you swear the testimony and comments that you may show be the truth?
I do.
Want you to state your name and spell your last name, please?
Vincent Gonnellla, G-O-N-N-E-L-L-A.
And Mr. Gonnellla, you're the, what's your position with the school?
School Business Minister, or Board Secretary.
Okay. And who else do you think will be testifying? If you could raise your right hand, please, sir. With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony that you may give shall be the truth to help your God?
I do.
And could you state your name and spell your last name and what your involvement is here?
Sure. Kyle Arlington, Arlington, A-R-L-I-N-G-T-O-N.
A-R-L-I-N-G-T-O-N?
Correct.
And it's K-Y-L-E?
Yes.
Okay. Position. What do you do?
Superintendent of State.
Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen.
We have a third.
Ah, okay. Architect, engineer, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if you could raise your right hand. With regard to these matters, do you swear the testimony that you may give shall be the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Tammy Stouchko, S-T-O-U-C-H-K-O.
And it's Tammy?
Yes.
T-A-M-I or T?
T-A-M-Y.
Thank you. And just tell us what you do, Tammy.
I am a principal at SSP Architects.
Okay. Engineer. Engineer?
SSP Architects?
Architect, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Gonnellla, you have the floor?
Yes, good evening. So we're going to just take a moment of your time, I'm going to speak a little bit about the referendum that we do plan, which is part of this process. Then Mr. Arlington is going to come up and talk about the educational benefits of what we are trying to do here, and then Tammy will come up and go over the particulars of the projects for us. So I am excited to be here this evening to present to the Planning Board for a courtesy review of this exciting project that will impact the children and the community for many years to come. This project has many facets, and the funding of the project will need voter approval in the form of a bond referendum in October of 2022. So we felt it would be important for you to understand that process as we move forward, because people might be coming to you to ask you questions regarding that. A bond referendum is a financial strategy used by school districts to fund significant building improvements. There are several advantages to using this approach. A bond referendum is the only way to access state aid for building projects. We want to take advantage of every funding opportunity, and this is a big one. Without voter approval, we will lose out on this opportunity for around $5 million in state aid. So why this is very important to get the approval of the Planning Board is because now we, next step is to send this down to the Department of Education, who will tell us exactly what that dollar amount is. A bond referendum is similar to a mortgage or a business improvement loan, because it allows us to spread the cost out over time. Community members have a stake in the projects through their vote in October, and they can help decide the future of our schools. The bond proposal would fund the facility improvements that are, we're going to be discussing tonight, to align with the district's ambitious educational model for advancing student instruction and achievement. The district's architects perform the needs assessment and identify areas to target improvements throughout the facilities. The Board of Education narrowed that list with the goal of balancing district needs with fiscal responsibility. Kennelworth Board of Education has carefully maintained its facilities and equipment and used its means of funding where possible. For example, the district's capital funds were recently used to renovate both gymnasiums as well as to complete the vital facade repairs at Harding Schools that you probably saw last summer, as well as we've also leveraged state incentives and energy-saving projects, one of which we wrote before you last year. Some facilities are beyond routine maintenance, however. For example, the track and fields and the auditoriums are visibly in need of repair and replacement. Harding Schools, 1923, is pretty much original, so, and Brerly's as well, 1964. The board determined that bond referendum was the most appropriate fiscal strategy to provide students with the educational and enrichment experiences they need and deserve. So now I'd like to have Mr. Arlington come up and talk to you a little bit about the financial benefits of it, or the educational benefits of it.
Thanks, Mr. Thanks for having us tonight. As I said earlier, my name is Kyle Arlington. I'm honored to serve as Kennelworth Superintendent of Schools. As a school district, we work diligently to accelerate learning and innovation in our district, however, our facilities need upgrades to support those goals. Over the past several years, we've worked on curriculum innovations, a stronger focus on STEM-based instruction, early literacy skills, and enhanced resources for college-bound students. Our district's proposal would allow us to continue this momentum. The current structure of our buildings and grade levels limits our ability to continue expanding instruction. Moving sixth-grade students from Harding to Brerly would align with New Jersey's academic structure, which evaluates sixth graders based on middle school standards. New and renovated spaces would boost academic opportunities. Middle school students would inherit high school caliber labs. Additions and renovations also would give them dedicated art and music rooms and more classrooms as the district creates a unified middle school space. High school students would gain a high-tech science wing. Kennelworth students deserve the same opportunities that are available in neighboring districts. Our proposal would create a separate space without the expense of a separate building by adding a middle school entrance, cafeteria, and more classrooms. Sixth graders are more like seventh graders and eighth graders than they are like their K-5 student counterparts, and most districts enroll them in middle schools. This change would help the academic and social development of Kennelworth's sixth graders and offer them opportunities for clubs and other experiences that are important for their ages and stages. As it relates to our athletic facilities, nearly every high school in Union County has synthetic turf. Making the switch to turf in Kennelworth would allow use in most weather conditions. The running track, as Mr. Gonnellla mentioned, is in dire need of repair and is heavily used by the community and needs replacement. Upgrades would give Kennelworth the ability to host track meets, too. A bond referendum would bring transformative upgrades to the school district within a few years while spreading the cost out over time. Additionally, the proposal's HVAC replacements and upgrades would improve operating efficiency and therefore cost efficiency. Each classroom would have a new individual unit to handle heating, cooling, and ventilation for enhanced air quality. I feel we have a responsibility to give our students the experiences and instruction that will prepare them for success. The sixth grader shift to Brerly would create space at Harding for expanding preschool and resources for students with special needs. With our certified pre-K teachers following our approaches, we'll build a vital foundation for student achievement. By proposing renovations at school auditoriums, too, Kennelworth is targeting upgrades that would have a direct impact on student enrichment. Most students in the district participate in sports and/or the performing arts. Making the middle school curriculum more rigorous and consolidating it across grades six to eight would better prepare students for high school and beyond. What's good for students is also good for the Kennelworth community. Our pre-K program is in such high demand that there's always a waiting list. The ability to serve more students would make Kennelworth a more attractive real estate market. A new playground that's more age-appropriate and suitable for pre-K students would add to the program. Free-up space could be used by our special ed program so that more Kennelworth students can stay in their town with their peers, rather than being bused to another district that has space for a broader range of services. Eventually, Kennelworth may be able to accept tuition students from other districts into these special ed programs, which would generate revenue. All in all, this referendum focuses on what we're calling the four A's: academics, athletics, the arts, and air quality. These things help Kennelworth take a big leap forward towards greater innovation, stronger programming, and will likely increase the reputation and the worth and value of what it means to attend and graduate from the Kennelworth schools. I appreciate any consideration that the Planning Board will give tonight, and I'm also pleased to introduce our principal architect, Tammy Stouchko.
Thank you again for having us. That's what we want to do, and here's how we're going to get there.
What he said.
So you want the different sites, one by one? We start with Lot 1, which is Brerly Middle High School, which is actually the lion's share of what the referendum will cover. What we're looking to do over at Brerly is put an addition on the back of the school facing Monroe Avenue, so between the back of the school and the soccer field currently, and that would be a two-story addition, about 22,000 square feet. That addition would house a brand-new entrance that would be identified as the middle school entrance, all in an effort to keep the middle school students separate from the high school students. That addition on the first floor would be high school space, that would be state-of-the-art science labs and a science classroom. The entrance facing Monroe Avenue would have a stairwell where the students would come straight up the stairwell. We would have on the second floor a separate main office for middle school students, visitors, staff, that would come in and greet their students, same security measures that the school has now in both Harding and Brerly. There would be a separate nurses area for the middle school. As Kyle did mention, also a separate art class, a separate music class. Special ed class would also go into the addition. There are some classrooms on the second floor that are currently being used by the high school, middle school, that's mixed. That whole second floor, there'd be some renovations to create the full middle school curriculum being taught, with the exception of gym. Gym in the cafeteria will be taken the space of the current auxiliary gym. So there is plans to move the students for their gym, their phys ed classes and lunch down to the auxiliary gym. So there's about a little over 1,000 square feet being built on the first floor by the athletic entrance that will help connect the main school to that auxiliary gym to even further keep the students separate between middle school and high school. There are some other renovations within the school to create that separation and modify for the curriculum. In addition to addition and building, part of that referendum includes, as Kyle mentioned that last day, indoor air quality. There are some HVAC changes that are being included, which is replacement of a couple of mechanical units as well as almost all of the unit ventilators that are in the classrooms to get those up to date and working and functioning, in addition to a district-wide building management system to control that HVAC. Currently, some of it's not really being controlled, it's hands-on to make it turn on and off. So that is included. Auditoriums, you've heard, they are original, they're classic, they're outdated, they need to be updated. So that's floors, seats, ceiling, and air quality, some wall treatments, acoustic treatments. So just showing a little bit of love everywhere throughout the building. I think that covers most of what's, oh, really also, the field. So the track, turf field, the fences for safety and security around that, and a little bit more of the regrading once we start putting building in there to deal with whatever we need to in stormwater as well. Drop, the drop-off area. So the main middle school entrance is off of Monroe Avenue. There is on the plans a drop-off area, so not intended for parking, just intended to get parents and people off of Monroe to be able to drop off their students and then continue in the same direction down Monroe Avenue. That's Brerly. You want to go to Harding?
Yeah, I'm sure we have some questions, but we'll save it to the end.
Sure. Okay. So Harding--
Are we okay to go to Harding? Do you want to impact this side of it, or do you want to hear Harding next?
Yeah.
Let's hear Harding.
Okay.
Because I'm sure the question's going to be one and the same with the school.
So Harding is Lot 12. There is no formal building addition proposed for Harding. It is interior renovations to modify some of the classrooms for pre-K. So one of the requirements for a pre-K classroom is to have a self-contained toilet room. So those are really the renovations looking to happen there. Creating a pre-K entry so that the pre-K center can come in its own door, keeping those students also separated from the K-5 population. A new preschool playground is also proposed outside of that entrance. Playground requirements are different for pre-K students as opposed to the kindergarten through 5H group, so that is what that new playground would accommodate, is a pre-K-sized playground area fenced in for their curriculum as well. Capital improvements in the referendum for Harding, also the same mechanical upgrades, which would be the unit ventilators, the building-wide, the district-wide building management system to control the HVAC, a few rooftop units that were not able to fit in on the energy savings program that is currently being completed, and the little bit of love that is needed in that auditorium as well, force, seats, walls, ceiling, and the mechanical units as well. That's Harding.
Okay. Okay. Is that what you have for now, Tammy?
Absolutely.
If it's okay for you, Tammy?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I believe we may have some questions. I have official questions. Does anybody have any questions before I go? Mr. Mathio?
It all sounds great and definitely, you know, it's overdue. The one thing that jumps out at me is, and it's hard to tell by scale, as far as the drop-off area, you know, my only concern would be the proximity to the 14th Street intersection and the backup in the morning. I don't know how much consideration that was given during the design.
That--
In terms of backups, you know?
That's something that we can definitely look at further, that the need for a separate drop-off area was identified. It's schematic, there's still the ability to work back and forth on that and have that evaluated.
Do you want to follow this question, or do you need like a long wait for more?
Yes. Yes.
Can I say something? Well, one of the things that we may consider when we do operation, we may decide have a staggered time for the opening. Currently, the 7 through 12 has the same exact starting time. So what we could do is stagger the 6 through 8 starting time as a different starting time to Brerly, which would kind of disperse the number of cars that would be going through there. If you go down Monroe at 10 minutes to 8 right now, it's back the amount of light. So this actually, if you stagger the time, you might actually alleviate that in itself. So some of those things are under consideration as well.
Anyone else? I have a couple questions that maybe, I just would like to know. So it seems like you're revamping, so you're taking the middle school and making that separate from the high school. Would that mean that there will be more children be able to go to the school? Would you have more space for more children at that point? And if so, how many do you think you would be able to bring in?
More students would be basically dependent on how many kids are born in Kennelworth. And it's not Brerly, but Harding. And that's really where we're focused, is the pre-K program, where we're turning away students currently.
Right.
So that's where we will be able to accommodate more students. Obviously, we'll also be able to accommodate more at Brerly. We still, right now, we're under our functional capacity at Brerly, but we could, if there's a bubble going through, we could accommodate more students at Brerly as well.
How about classroom size? Would that change?
Not at Harding. Harding's currently very low. Brerly shouldn't either.
Shouldn't have that. So you will have some increase in students, but based on how the money runs, I guess, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's basically, we would have an increase in students because we now, instead of having 30 kids in pre-K, we can have 60 kids in pre-K.
Okay.
That's basically the increase.
All right. And a timeframe?
Well, October would be the referendum, then the bonds would be issued in December. Then the bonds would be issued in December. Hopefully, go out to bid for, this is going to be a phased-in project, and that's something that we have to still figure out the phase in because we can't do it all at once.
So would the addition be first?
Probably. In addition to, yeah, because we'd have to build the addition before we could move the kids out of Harding. So that would be one of the first things.
So the lion's share of the work would be on the front end of the Phase 1?
Yes.
Phase 2 would be, of course?
Harding.
Harding, yeah. And that's when all the exterior work would be done at that time, too?
The field work. The field work. Yeah, well, the field work, we're talking about the field work, and you can't really do some of the field work because the field work is, the construction is going to disrupt some of the field work.
Exactly.
So that's the logistics that we're trying to work out. We also don't want to not have to play football on someplace else. So, you know, so we're trying to do that logistically, you know? Some of the things that we're concerned about is to be, quite frankly, the supply chain. We're going through the ESIP right now, and we've replaced quite a few of our air handlers. We're replacing the boiler at Harding through that. And some of the lead times on these items are astronomical. I mean, what was it, 12 weeks for the training? Or that is?
Oh, that was a quick one, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, some of these things are taking months to get some of these unit ventilators. So that's what we're going to have to determine. When we get closer to it, we're going to have to say, how long can, what's the turnaround time for the manufacturers to put in these unit vents in these classrooms? Are they going to be able to build 220 of them and get them to us and install them? We don't want them in December, we want them over the summer. So if they're not able to provide them to us in the summer of '23, then we might have to hold off until the summer of '24. So, you know, the supply chain is messing up a lot of things, as well as our budget as well.
Sure. So the last two questions, and these are the two that I'm going to hate to ask, and you're probably going to hate to answer. But the overall budget on the project, and how does that trickle down to the residents in Kenilworth, if it does at all?
Right. So right now, it's, I'm not going to give you a hard number because a lot of what we're talking about tonight is going to be based on what happens with the Department of Education.
If all your stars weren't aligned?
Yeah, if all are set, it's going to be, it's a $31 million project. We're using about $2 million of our capital reserve. And then there's hopefully about $5 million in state aid that would come in off of that. And we're hoping to try and keep the cost to the taxpayers under $200 a household.
Well, I think it's a fantastic project, and I think it's money well spent, and it's well overdue. So another great job.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. Is there an elevator in the rear?
Yes. Yes, we're going to keep the existing elevator, but there will be a new one. The one currently is, you know, 56 years old, whatever it might be, 37 years old. So we might as well take advantage of putting a new one in while it's being done, yes.
So because this is a courtesy hearing, I don't know, do we open this to the public?
You could.
So if someone, because this is an informal hearing, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this courtesy hearing from the Board of Ed? Okay. See you none. Well, I again want to thank you very, very much for preparing and letting us understand how you're going to go forward with this project, or try to go forward with this project. I hope you get this bond in place real quick, and I would love to watch this go up. This is going to be a real plus for our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Don't run out so fast, we didn't vote, honey. I forgot it was an informal.
It's informal that voting is required, but you take formal action finding it consistent with the master plan and finding that the capital plan is advanced by us.
That's basically it. That's what you're voting on, and wish you have some recommendations that the board could consider, but they're not bound by it. And I will do two resolutions, one for Harding and one for Brerly for the next meeting. So?
One vote or two votes?
Well, we can do one vote. Because they're interconnected. I'll do two resolutions, but let's vote on both of them at the same time, unless the board has a problem with one school and not the other. I don't think that's going to happen, so we'll do both at the same time. So I guess we would like to hear a motion to approve the Board of Ed that it conforms with our master plan and everything that Mr. Rago just said, okay? Made by Mr. Scadari, seconded by Mr. Venestrella. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vasarna?
Yes.
Mr. Venestrella?
Yes.
Mr. Dave? Sorry. Mr. Kmenti?
Yes.
Mr. Kmentia?
Yes.
Mr. Scadari?
Yes.
And Mr. Herbalario.
Congratulations again. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward. We have some FDV Realty application 21-02 on 15th Street. 203-207-15th Street.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Donald P. Fraser Jr., I'm an attorney with firm of fraud, Fraser, Farquhar, Clark, New Jersey. I'm here this evening on behalf of FDV Realty LLC. I have with me this evening Mr. Paparato, the principal of FDV Realty LLC, as well as our project engineer at DECK. This is a pretty simple application. This is a fully conforming, boulah sub.
May I interrupt? Just let the record show that Mr. Fraser's been before us a many a times. His credentials are impeccable, and we can proceed at that point.
But they were, I'm not testifying.
I just wanted to get that on the record.
I appreciate it. Anyway, I think some of the board members will recall this application. This application was before this board in a prior iteration. There is a 150-by-100-foot tract that is owned by my client that is presently 50-by-100 lot and 100-by-100 foot lot. We were here last time on an application because there had already been an approval for the construction of a house on the 50-by-100-foot lot. And we came in to get approval of subdivision of the remaining 100 feet to get two more lots. Now somehow, that approval for the 50-foot lot got retroactively withdrawn. I have a problem with that, but on the good side, my client has gone back to the drawing board and decided not to pursue that issue and to just go fully conforming. So we got 150 by 100. We'll move the lot line so it's not a 50 and 100, but then we have two 75-foot lots, fully conforming. That's all that's before the, now what's my client going to do with it? To get ultimately put approved family on each of the 75-foot lots, again, which is fully conforming. I've taken a look, as has Mr. Paparato and Mr. Deck, and read review letters of both Parker Consultants and of Mr. O'Brien. We will comply. Fully prepared to have both Mr. Paparato and Mr. Deck answer any questions the board has. But that's it, in a nutshell. Brevity is the soul of wit, I think was Oscar Wilde said.
We're going to need something on the record, you know, some testimony. So I'd like to hear from Mr. O'Brien. Okay? Mr. O'Brien. He said he will fully conform with everything that you and Parker Consultants.
Correct.
Can you get another sheet of paper in there?
For our free subdivision? Yeah, that works.
Chairman, as Mr. Fraser reported out, this is a conforming subdivision. The two-family homes are allowed by ordinance on lots that are appropriately sized. So no bolted references are required. The only matters in front of the board if you're considering would be the general health, safety, and welfare of the people in Kenilworth. I did point out, I asked a few questions in my report. If Mr. Fraser says that they will comply with anything I've asked, that's fine. But there are some questions that I think do need to be answered so that we have a better understanding. I don't know if he would like to field it or perhaps Mr. Deck.
I'll take the first shot. Although I'm not qualified as an engineer, Mr. O'Brien, then I'll call Mr. Deck with what I say is obstetrician-servant. That is, there are a few more I would quote. You're not incorrect.
All right, so he's agreed with everything that's said.
We're going to the main line letter, right, Kevin?
Yes. Page 3, item 6. I asked if any trees had been disturbed or removed, and if any have, or any additional trees beyond the street trees that are required to be planted.
Beyond the street trees, on that site. I think Mr. Paparato would probably have to be the person to answer that question. I have no idea. But I mean, will I have to Mr. Paparato's form right now to answer that question?
Why don't we do that? Yeah.
Why are we so involved? Because I'm sure that there'll be some questions.
We can do that. Gentlemen, if you'll both come up to the microphone. Mr. Deck, could you raise your right hand, please, with regard to this application? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give showed me the truth?
I do.
Just for the record, state your name, spell your last name.
Ember Willialisholpass, last name Deck, D E C.
And your engineering license is still in effect?
I'm licensed professional engineer and licensed engineer.
Okay. And Mr. Paparato, if you could raise your hand, right hand, please, with regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give showed me the truth?
I do.
You just state your name and spell your last name, please.
Mr. Paparato, P A, B A, R A, T T O.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Paparato, Mr. O'Brien, you asked a question about item 6 on his review letter, which is not the street trees that you're being required to install, but what about trees that are on this site that may be removed or disturbed as a result of this prospective development? What are you going to do? What are you going to take out, how many are going to put in? So you don't plan to remove the trees in part of this application?
No.
Mr. Deck, is that correct, you can, Mr. Deck?
We do show some trees that are in the line of the driveways. You know, as far as replacement goes, I don't know if there's an ordinance that requires a finger-to-finger by per tree size replacement, but whatever the ordinance requires, we will fully comply.
Okay. Question 7, will any outdoor gathering areas be provided, particularly since three-bedroom houses usually attract families?
Are you putting in patios or decks off the bat, Mr. Deck?
No.
So Mr. Paparato, you're not putting any patios and no decks, just straight backyard grass?
Grass.
Item 8 is the room for a shed. Anything like that be provided?
Shed? I don't need a shed. No sheds.
So let me just ask the question. Mr. Paparato is not putting the shed. However, after these properties are built, if someone comes in, pulls a permit to put a shed, they could do that?
Yes, provided compliance with the ordinance.
If he's selling those homes.
That's what I was going to say, Chairman. Is Mr. Paparato, though, he always in the future could sell, or somebody might sell in the future, but a long, long time from now, Mr. Paparato's deceased? But it is not Mr. Paparato's present intention to sell the properties. He's building the whole whole.
Maybe for Mr. Deck, item 9. She's three of four, has what appears to be a landscaping detail in the upper-right corner, but it's not labeled, so I really don't know what that's for. I don't know if you want to explain that or tell me it's not relevant.
You want sheet three, eight?
I'm sheet three. I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
That one, top right.
Top right?
Yep, that area. Shows landscaping, but there's no label.
Yeah, that shows as a schematic of the subdivision itself. Those symbols treat for the existing trees.
Okay. You're actually just to be revised to label it so we know what it is?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. I'll refer number 10 to Mr. Cuero, because that deals with the slope in the back of the house, which he's referred to in his report. And then last, the board may wish to have some type of testimony about whether or not the general character of the neighborhood and the general welfare and the standards of the borough. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser.
Mr. Cuero?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a few questions. As Mr. Fraser said, that he would comply with everything in my letter. First?
That my client will comply.
Fine, I will comply. I'm not sure if I missed this with Mr. O'Brien, but the location of the HVAC equipment looks like it would be in that little space that's in between the sidewalk and the, I guess, the X that looks over your...
Side of the H.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mr. Cuero. Those three types installed around the little symbols, they represent hedge type or... High-type of screening at the front of the HVAC system.
The applicant has already said that they will comply with my request that be labeled.
Secondly, will this be subsidized by five or D?
I'll top the point, indeed. That's the only question. That's what I got, D.
And the only other thing, and I think it's for Mr. Paparato. Back in 2018, this road was done as part of the NJDOT improvements. I know that they wanted to connect future laterals. Was that done at that time, during that time, or were they? So you're going to, okay, so you have to do a vote of the opening permit and connect?
At the time, the obligation of building permits, we forced wide rules.
All right. That's fine. I'm good. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you. This site drains more towards the rear. When you submit top plans, try to grade everything as best you can.
We're going to try to pick up everything that's coming off the building itself and the area around the building. And you brought all the tours there, just from that area itself, nothing from the buildings to the front.
So after, the majority that used to go towards the rear is now going to go towards the front?
Except for what's immediately behind it.
Yes.
We're putting it the other way. The third portion of any additional impervious that's being created will be directed toward the front. But the applicant is not necessarily undertaking to fix everything that's already in the back that's existing that we're not disturbing.
But we're eliminating, but the line.
You good? Mr. Deck, I was wondering if maybe you discussed with Mr. Paparato at any time, specifically because there are two-family homes going in there, the thought process of generators, going back up generators at the time of construction, primarily because once you do that, maybe there'd be an upsize of gas line or something to that nature. Rather than opening up the street later on to put in a larger line, maybe we could look at that as a consideration so we don't have to do a street opening later.
Well, we're just trying to get whether a future generator should be?
It doesn't, it really doesn't have to be part of the plan or the application, but it's something that I've been thinking about quite a bit. After people come in and they're building their homes, and at the time of construction, it's much easier either to increase the size of the gas line at that point or go ahead. And he may have a big enough gas line to begin with, but it's something to research. So we're not opening that street for a second time, especially when we're trying to, you know, get our streets paved, as you know.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. And I think it's my own lack of familiarity with what you're talking about here. Are you saying that there should be generators for these houses?
No.
Okay. Because that's how my client and I both heard it on high construction.
No, no, no. A backup generator. All I'm saying is, a lot of homes right now are putting in backup generators. And they're coming into the building department after the fact. And most of the houses are not sized properly for the gas line and have to go back out into the street. What we're doing as part of the borough in our town is we're repaving all these streets. Then if you have to go back out there, now you have the saw cut and everything else that goes on. All I'm asking is to please take a look and consider if we can upgrade the gas line that's coming in for a future generator. If Mr. Paparato or any applicant would consider doing that, it's there.
Just putting it in so that there's a cable... Just putting it in so that there's a capability for that, a future statement.
Exactly. I'm not asking him to put it in. All I'm asking him to look at that.
All right. That's certainly something that my client can look at. I live in Garde myself and I put in a generator a year and a half ago and it was pain.
Yep.
I get it.
Yep. Possible.
Yeah.
That's just something I...
Basically, it's a gas company with a larger service connection.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's all.
Got it, yeah? Okay.
So I guess the only thing I should then respond to, because there was a comment before about us, I guess, complying with quality of life and neighborhood and all that, well, it's zoned for what we're seeking to do. There is no use variance. There is no bulk variance. It's a zone where the borough ordinance tells us what's appropriate to go there. If you have a 75-foot lot, and we've already painfully gone through this whole issue before this board, if the two-family use is appropriate and it is consistent with what's permitted in the zone and what's there, and that's what the applicant's requesting, that fully conforming requirement.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien, we were discussing a few times about houses in-kind looking exactly the way it was that addressed.
Yes, the applicant is submitting two different architectural plans of the homes. I suspect that the board has looked at both of them. I didn't raise why, because I create the issue to say it's got to be applied with. Yeah, I pointed out that this is a requirement. In my opinion, they certainly do look different. The board should weigh in if they have any concern.
They definitely are different with the plan. All right. And they're both very good looking.
And they're what?
They're looking at the plans.
Okay. Just double checking.
We're well aware of the look-alike ordinance, Mr. Chairman, and I did in fact discuss that, how we work the application process, which also Mr. Deck and Mr. Paparato. And while I, as a legal matter, don't believe that this is a prerequisite to board granting the relief, which we're entitled by statute, I nonetheless counsel my client that we should be putting in some elevations and treatments and plans for this board so that we wouldn't get any grief about it.
Right.
And that's what we've considered.
Well, this board wouldn't give you any grief. I believe that you're in compliance and, you know, we just want to make sure that what the board is looking for is not what the board is looking for, is what the borough is looking for.
I'm merely making the legal point that I think we're entitled to do the subdivision, whether we build houses now or not.
Oh, you're entitled to a subdivision. I'm just talking about the in-kind.
Right.
I don't want to take it too far out because it is what it is. I just want to be sure that we don't have two red dresses and that's basically...
We're well aware of that, we agree.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser. Anyone from the board wishing to... Well, how about we do this? Let's make a move. Are you complete with your...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I think what we do is how, let's have a motion to open this to the public?
Wait, before we do, do you want to hold the board comment until after the public or...
Well, yeah, because I thought maybe once we hear the public, we may, it may stir up some more questions because it's still open, right? So can we give a motion? Motion made by Mr. Venestrella, seconded by Mr. Scudary. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the board wishing to speak on this topic and this board?
Public.
I'm sorry? What did I say?
You said word.
I'm sorry. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing none?
The motion is closed, the public portion.
Closed by Mr. David, seconded by Mr. Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the board, let's have your discussions.
The only issue that I have, Kevin, in your... Speaking of the in-kind, you had me reference to maybe we want to, I don't remember exactly how you worded it, put these plans on the record as this is what is going to be built there. So I agree that these are different enough and I have no issue with them, but I want to make sure that this is what's going to be built.
If that is your wish, you may wish to suggest that to Mr. Rego and that he specify those plans in the resolution.
Very good.
As a condition?
Yes, sir.
I would probably phrase it that they will comply with the, you know, look-alike ordinance, whatever the formal name is. So if it approves it, that'll be in there. The applicant's gone on the record as saying, as has some of the board members, that what appears to be the plans is not look-alike. So that'll be, that'll be put in the resolution if they comply. Was there anything else that... Did anybody else have anything?
Would the board be, would the board be able to see what the exact houses will be at the time that they're built? The renderings, if they change from this, we haven't heard of it. I don't, I don't know what context that would be done. All we're seeking today, again, is subdivision. So at that point, it seemed to me that my understanding of your procedure in town is incorrect, assuming somebody's correcting. But I would think what happens is when the building permit application is submitted, says this is where, this is what's going to be built, that that gets run by zoning and somebody from zoning looks at whatever ordinance is or, excuse me, whatever resolutions are already in place that govern the property and they'll either say yea or nay that you're doing that which is in compliance with these conditions.
Now, just again, a cookie cutter thing.
My client is always just building cookie cutters.
Mr. Fraser is collecting, correct, Mr. Clemente? And then should there be any change at some point, they have to come back to the board?
Okay.
Because Mr. Rego is going to specify the plans that Mr. Fraser and Mr. Paparato work on and those are going to be built.
Okay.
Mr. Rego, it's like you...
For me, the issue is in guidance to those people who will be responsible for reviewing the in-kind review when the plans are actually submitted. And knowing that the board felt this was actually differentiated, if they came in with something completely different, that might be more cookie cutter-like, we would be opposed to it.
Well, you're approving those plans in your res...
Well, that's not what I heard Lou say in the resolution.
No, well, I can, I can... If, if, I mean, build, build the houses consistent with the plans that you've submitted to the board tonight.
That's my understanding. Let me ask Mr. Paparato directly.
If he says yes, then I can put that as a...
And just are you going to build those houses or are you going to change that?
We're going to build those houses.
Okay. Good. Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So do we have, we exhausted that whole thing, but did we have any condition at all, something about the tree or something?
We will take our two letters and the conditions that the applicant has agreed to will be incorporated in the resolution as well.
I always refer to the letters as part of the, part of the approval process. Okay.
Which is precisely why I started out with saying we'll comply with those letters.
Okay, so that'll be taken up. That'll be good. Can we have a motion to approve this application based on Mr. Fraser's statement that they will comply with the two letters from our engineer and our planner here tonight?
I'll make that motion.
And the houses that we've seen will be built? And the houses that we've seen will be built on these plans.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Mazzio, seconded by Mr. Venestrella. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vasarna?
Yes.
Mr. Venestrella?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzio?
Yes.